All right, well, we will call the Somerset School District Regular Session School Board Meeting on Monday, July 17th to order at 7:23. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our district's mission is developing learners, empowering futures together. Our district's vision is to become a premier community, bridging learners with their passions and pathways. Our core strategies are to enhance learning, to advance services and operations, to engage community through partnerships, and to cultivate professional growth and leadership. Board members, please review the protocol reminders. Item F is approval of our agenda. Is anyone willing to make that motion?
So move.
Thank you, Bob. A second? Marie. Thank you, Marie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Motion passes. Six to zero. We have a roll call. Should probably do that. Teja, can you do roll call please?
Brian Walton. Katie Thurman.
Here.
Marie Colba.
Here.
Nancy Dressel.
Here.
Courtney Chapewski.
Here.
Todd Dunher.
Patty Chutman.
George.
We will be having opportunity for public comments coming up on item three of our agenda. If you'd like to speak during that time, there are red cards over at the table. Please complete one to turn in when we get to item three. So now we'll move on to item two, our general reports, and we'll begin with to item two A, the superintendent's report.
Thank you. You go into enrollment, there is none. They won't see anything.
Yeah. What happened?
Well, we finished last month, so just look at our last month. I don't think there's been any.
No change.
Yeah, so there isn't a up or down in July.
But you put new.
You will have one in August when we see what we have for accounting.
Okay, but there is an attachment.
Pardon?
There is an attachment.
There is, but there's nothing in it.
There is. Well, I'm saying.
No. Only one.
What's that?
It's the old.
Oh, okay.
There's no grades.
What's that?
So this doesn't indicate grades or anything? Will that be on a regular one?
Right, when we fire up again, we'll have all the my grade or starting in our year, past year, so we can compare.
Okay.
The number two piece on hiring, I'm just gonna pass these around. This is kind of the first attempt, I believe, Dave, in the of our framework for.
First attempt, yeah.
For status of employment. We have everything but wages in there. And so we'll just keep refining this, but you'll be able to see every month, you know, the inflow and outflow. And it's not that drastic here, but you'll be able to keep track of it that way.
So is the long-term goal to be, to include salary?
It depends on what you want. It's public information. If whatever you feel comfortable with, if you don't feel comfortable putting salaries, wages, things like that in there, fine, if people really want it all, but that's public information. All the ones I've seen, we always include in dollar amounts. And we're all, you know, we're proud of our care people. You know, it's, you know, we wanna, you know, keep good people, you have to compensate them.
Dave, Mark?
Yes?
We were actually hoping you might discuss that tonight because last, last time that this was discussed, I think one or two people said they wanted it and one or two people said they didn't want it, so we weren't sure.
So whatever direction. Is that data available on you guys' website?
It's a pile of averages. So teacher averages.
Oh, it's not item myself. It's not the whole civic tower district.
There's a newspaper website.
Look at what it was.
It is. It's usually reported at the end of the year, so what you can find, I mean, there's a spreadsheet you can download that has name and number of credits and years in the district and total years and salary and, you know, I mean, typically what you can access very easily that way is one year later. But in all reality, everybody's contract isn't on record, so if you wanted that information before that year later, any citizen could request it.
I guess I, sorry, I have fifteen, sixteen averages now. I haven't seen the info yet, but maybe it's up there.
I haven't looked. I just know that I can go and find more previous years, you know, whenever that report is available, so I do as well.
And certainly admin is up there right now. I just, I haven't seen.
My point, bringing that up, is still the exposure is already there.
Yeah.
Is that enough?
It's accessible through a couple of different ways.
I'm a little bit more protective of the privacy of some things. I think the wage benefits is what they want the information.
I'm not in favor of broadcasting. If they want to find out, there's a way to find out. There's no need for us to put out another list of it. I just don't see it as, I don't.
I kind of think that I'd like to know what the other school districts around do. If they're, if they're putting it out there, if they're normal stuff to the public, then I would like to at least look into it and see what's, you know, are we at least comparable? Or if we're not putting it out there, is it because we're not comparable? Or are, you know, I.
Because originally we belong to a conference, we want to just check town schools and see what they have.
Yeah.
And let's say seven out of eight will do this, then that will do it. I mean, that.
Yeah. As a board member, I would like to see.
Do you want me to bring the information back to you?
Yeah, I would like to see it.
Bring it back? Okay, okay.
Well, and I, and I just even mean the salaries. As a board member, I'd like to see that. I think we have discrepancies in how our bodies are currently paid because as board members, we didn't know what salaries were being established as if people were being hired, even though.
Oh, at that point, yeah. I was confused on where we're, where we're putting that out. Or we could publish it in the paper. That's what I was worried about.
No, but I would like it to be a link on the consent agenda. You know, I mean, if we had the spreadsheet with the salary purpose filled in and it was just a link on the consent agenda.
Let me check and see what they do.
Let's see what they do. I would.
I know the ones, you know, that I've been involved in the past.
Me too. You're not, you're not telling it.
But they're dealing with a lot more.
What is the feeling on the board? I know how you feel. I know how you feel. You'd like it. I personally would not. You're saying you would not. This could be. I think it's information we could utilize. I don't see the benefit.
I know it's, it's very confusing to understand some parts of why some are paid more than others, especially if you look at masters and credits. Here's a service and you find some discrepancies, which is nice to see those things and ask those questions of why there might be a discrepancy.
So you would like to see it? Is that what you're saying?
For that benefit, yeah. Right. Yeah.
For us to see or for it to be?
For the board's benefit, yeah.
I just, I think the more information we have, the better.
As a board, but.
I don't have a problem putting it out there for, it's, it's public dollars. It's, it's public money and most people don't know it goes to DTI and search lists and that and all that there. And it's just a way for the public to know this is where your tax dollars are being spent. And, and also, you know, they have, most people have these visions that they're getting, people are getting paid these obscene amounts of dollars and they're not. And sometimes looking at it going, oh, you know, maybe I need to stop using that argument. And, you know, so I, I think the more information the public has, the, the better it is.
Well, that's clear as mud. Yeah.
Okay, I'll get you that information.
That's right.
Okay, and I'll bring it back to you. I'll send it out to you.
Thank you.
If you scroll down on the agenda, AASA update, I just want to take a second here to go through a few things that I spent four days in DC this last week. If you click on item one, there's a new campaign out there that's called I Love Public Education, which is really going to be a toolkit to promote education, public education. And we, I believe the next link is, okay, that's not it. But you can take some time on that first one and read that, just what it involves and kind of some of the things, the time we spent on our regional meetings. The next thing is the different, different white papers on the issues that we were discussing in lobbying, which the whole Medicaid cut, you know, the, you know, gives a good explanation of what that is, so you kind of get a little heads up on what we're looking at, how it's gonna affect us, tuition tax credits for private schools, rural education, which is an interesting one, and it does affect us because we do, you know, we're in competition with the metro, you know, for teachers and goods and services and what have you, so there's issues with that. Infrastructure, the aging of infrastructure, how, you know, is federal dollars available for us to update. Child nutrition is, is an ongoing big one. The whole budget appropriations piece was, was very big. E-rate is something that, you know, there's two parts to E-rate, and one is the whole of the funding for connectivity, you know, linking our, our state together, you know, cabling, you know, putting our fiber, what have you. The second part is dollars available for hardware. And that's, E-rate is a good thing. There's actually been some, you know, more money available for that. But those are the, the big ticket items that we're on the Hill lobbying, the congressional for our congregation, congregation, did I say that right?
Your congressional.
Delegation, delegation, not congregation, I'm sorry. You know, I've actually got a new sleep machine that I sleep on like seven hours a night. Woo, I'm feeling good, but my mouth hasn't caught up with me yet. The advocacy book, at the same time we're out there for AASA and dealing with our legislators, they host an advocacy conference where they have speakers from, you know, the congressional, you know, legislators offices come in and help us understand, you know, the inner workings. And that's just kind of the, the program for that, just kind of schedule that around. They keep us pretty busy out there, which you don't want to go outside in DC this time of year anyway, 'cause I walked about six blocks to the Hart Office Building and I looked like I jumped in the pool. So, and the next piece is our AASA agenda, which is about forty pages long. Again, if you want to cure insomnia, you can look at that. And I think the last, last one is our delegation. These are all the people that we met with. The day, we have one day where we're up on the Hill, and I think we had ten meetings. And it was a travel day for legislators, so I think out of the ten, we got two actual legislators, otherwise you're always meeting with staffers, you know, the education staffer and things like that. My first question to them is always, have you been to Wisconsin? And if they say yes, okay, what school did you go to? Typically, it's a private school because somebody contributed a lot of money to a campaign and they have this internship or what have you and that. So if you haven't gone out there on the Hill and really did some politicking, you'll, if you ever get there, you'll realize that the world's run by twenty-five to twenty-seven year olds. Anyway, again, that's just information for you. That's, you know, how we spent last Sunday through, through Wednesday. The next piece I have is, you know, we switched our food service to Togger, and right now we've got Scott Capke here to, I'll let you introduce yourself, and I'm disappointed you didn't bring caramel rolls or cookies, Italian dunkers or.
Bruce Togger would be very, very upset with me, but sometimes I've gone to board meetings where there's not enough for everybody, not just this. It looks like there's something going on. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent, I'm Scott Capke. I live in Stillwater. I am the district manager for Togger. I've been with Bruce Togger for twenty-two years. I've been in school lunch for thirty years managing. I started at the food service director at Dyna Public Schools and then moved on with Bruce, and it's a great company. We're very family oriented. His two sons work for him. My boss, Judy Cameron, Senior Vice President, has been with Bruce for thirty-two years since he started the organization from scratch. Some schools, we still have thirty-two years later going through the rebid process. As I met last week with the principals and the food service staff, and I loved every minute of it, you can tell I'm very enthusiastic about school lunch, and from what I've heard, we need, we have some work to do, which is great. I love challenges, but I also know that we are going to be doing a lot of communicating, but also a lot of listening and trying to figure out what's best for the kids here in this district. Rules aside and everything else, we can do a better job, and with Deb at, at the helm, with my direction and helping her with her leadership and also kind of pointing her maybe in some different directions that she was not normally going with the other companies, I think we will have some success, believe me. My wife teaches with one of the members of Chris's BTA, and I heard it firsthand before all of this came out to bid and everything, like, oh, gosh, God, I hope your company gets it because it's kind of, we've got some work to do and, you know, and again, and I, as I told the ladies here, believe me, every single one of them love the kids. Service is probably not the issue, or customer service is not the issue. It's what we're actually menuing, how we're menuing it, how we're preparing it, and how we're putting it in front of them visually so that they can eat with their eyes. Like I told Chris, there's a piece of equipment that Deb said they still haven't unpacked. It's a salad bar. Now, we aren't gonna have a salad bar, but we are gonna have what's called a fruit and vegetable bar. Our company did that way before Michelle Obama mandated that there has to be mandatory fruits and vegetables on the, on the students' tray. And we've had such great success with that. If you were able to see some of the pictures in our, in our proposal, we were really proud of that, and it really works. It really works at the elementary school because they don't, their minds haven't already been diverted in fast food and all that other stuff, so we're starting them young. And again, the staff is just super, three generations. I was like, are you kidding me? This is so neat. So we're really excited. I don't, I'm gonna sit and listen to the rest of your board for a little bit, a little bit about me. I used to be a school board member, at Stillwater, glad I'm not on that board right now. So any questions? We are gonna have more choices, believe me. That is rule one at all grade levels.
Did we do, are we gonna be doing snacks for kids in the, the current year's Christmas? Is that part of the?
There's the school age care and after-school snacks, but not necessarily during the school day.
Could we look into that? Is that an option that you guys offer?
Anything's an option. I'm, I'm one, like I said, when I was at Dyna Schools, I had seven elementaries, two middle schools, and a very large high school in a very demanding district. I was always looking for additional revenues, additional ways of getting nutrition out to the, out to the community.
So I guess I would ask Scott then, for districts that do that, what does that look like?
Oh, yeah, we can do that.
Excellent. And will the listing that you do involve parents at all?
The what?
The listing that you're gonna be doing and getting feedback?
We will start that day one at the, the open house night. So each building will have a member of our food service staff, if not myself, Deb, and maybe a couple head cooks or whatever. We're gonna round up our group. We're gonna be out there in our uniforms, with literature, with menus, not just collecting money. That's not really the major point of it. We want to get the information out that, you know what, things are gonna change. Give us a try, give us some feedback, because we're gonna be looking not only with our ears but with our eyes on our meal counts each day to say, hmm, this isn't really a good item. I also do some schools down in Arizona. Meatballs and mashed potatoes does not go on in Arizona. I don't know why. It must be a Scandinavian thing up here, so, you know, they want burritos and southwest, you know, things. So we can, we can change the menu up.
What are your participation rates in free and reduced lunches up here in your schools?
That is something that you would think would be extremely high, and yet there are some issues with that, and we do identify those. We try to reach out to those families and just ask if it's a dietary need, if it's a, if it's, you know, my wife teaches, and so sometimes it's just a sensory need that they just do not like that. So we'll reach out to them and try to figure out. It may be something that we can provide to them that they may not even be aware of, and we'll reach out to see if we can get them involved. Or, like I said, this will be a lot of listening, surveys, getting out at PTAs, which will be nice, and we don't want to be on the bad side of the PTA, and also, you know, if we can hold a health fair at some sort of a school event where, again, we're off to the side, it's not the feature, but we're there, and if people are interested, they can stop by and see one of the cooks or the food service director. We really need to get active in a very quick time, and again, talking to the ladies last week, it was absolutely perfect, you know.
Do we have all the right equipment in all our schools to handle what you want to bring to us?
I, I believe so. And if not, then Mark and I will work on that and try to figure out how can we do that. I think we can do it. I mean, I, I'm not gonna think. The stuff that you have, as I made my tour in the, in the bid session, it looked very adequate to me.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Next item I have is, did anybody turn the video on?
Yes.
Oh, it is, okay. But that's my next item. So we implemented this, this year, and obviously we like it. We want to continue to do it. To eliminate any more human error or technology error, you know, I've asked our, our tech people to look at a more professional setup. Now, if we move our meeting, obviously, we can take some type of portable, but I'm asking them to research something that's more of a permanent piece that, you know, Teja can have control, because right now we got too many cooks in the kitchen. Okay? And if it's, you know, if it's given to her, it will get done. I have no doubt of that. But again, I think that's a way we want to, you know, we want to be more, more transparent and visible and what have you, but again, we're gonna look at some type of permanent mounted system in the room here that can.
Are they looking into options for live streaming?
I haven't mentioned that, but do you think we'd have a fan base?
I do. I do, actually, and that way it's.
Could this be a pay-per-view thing? It could help.
Yes, yes.
You never know, it might be a big seller.
I don't think it will be.
Oh, wasn't out for.
I think it would be nice to have live stream.
Usually the live stream is a software piece, and it might actually be beneficial for other things in our district also.
Next generation. You know, first thing, though, is, you know, we tried that, you know, we like it, but let's eliminate, you know, I mean, not to have a tape there once in a while that doesn't go over too well or, you know, what have you, so, so we'll get on that.
Will we be able to connect then the items from the agenda to the video so that you don't have to watch the whole thing? If all I wanted to see was the financial piece, I can click on that and it goes right to that video.
You're asking the wrong guy here.
That's what we have.
That's what we have, tech people?
Yeah, I, I really enjoy that with some of the other meetings that I watch that you don't have to go through the whole thing. You can just click on the item that you want to see.
The menu?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure it can be done.
I know it can be.
Okay, so we got that one. So I, I assume you're okay with that.
Yes.
Okay.
It's not expensive.
Well, it's gonna cost something, but I think it's worth the, the, the more transparent we can be.
Well, I, I'll agree with you.
Yeah. Let's see, strategic, oh, excuse me, HR study, you know, I'm working with three benefit advisors, Victoria McGrath and Springstead, just in the process of shoving material onto them so they can give us some idea of what this is gonna cost us. And, you know, my goal is, is the next couple of days, they have it in their hands so they can get back to me and we can say, okay, they're gonna charge us so much, they're gonna charge us so much, and we can make a decision who we want to go with so we can go on this. Because we got a lot of things sitting there in this, in this wage study, all these stipends that people have been given in the past. Right now, I take them the direction that, you know, what they've had in the past until we get new direction, we'll just continue, like the HR, not the HR, but the technology stipends that we've, we've had for individuals, because you eliminated a position, then you put the responsibility, then Trish took a piece of it, and then Matt and Jason both did, and they're receiving stipends. However, that's part of this wage study also because there's difference in compensation if you look at different districts and things like that. So we, you know, we want to be open, we want to be fair about this, and so we're just basically kind of froze everything as what we've had until we make a decision to move forward on it, so. Strategic plan, Wednesday, big day. That's when the court planning team comes together, and if we have two or forty-two, we're gonna do it, and so we can keep on track with this and bring it in on, bring it to the board in, in August. I made a comment here, I think you all know that, the different handbooks will be coming in August, and that's due to Spartan Gate, we're catching up, you know, we're trying to rebuild things and get all the data, if you need a name for it. Then the last thing I have is the job description for community ed and what your humans are in direction, you know, I, I'm estimating that. We have the old assistant to the athletic director position, which is basically what we've deemed the halftime position, and then we're looking at starting this community ed at somewhere around a point two-five. And so we're looking at two, keeping them separate pieces there. And so I'd like to open that up, that community ed position, but I don't know what your expectations are as of yet. And we've talked about it. To get going, you want to see more time in the community education area, less time, you know, we're basically starting from scratch. We, we had Renee doing some of it this last year to get it rolling off the ground, but I just, I don't think it's a halftime position as of right now. You know, when you move into community ed, it shouldn't be a cost to the district that should pay for itself. So regardless of what we do, but it's just how much time you want to put on, on it now to open it up.
So you're proposing a point two-five position?
Basically, yeah. I think at this point, to get it rolling and use this year again as, you know, let's take a look and see how it goes, and then as it grows, that position can grow.
I do like seeing it gradual, increasing. I think that's a good proposal.
So if you give me the leeway up to two-point-five, and that's what I'd, what I'd like to go at. The other piece of this is for July and August, I'd like to continue Renee's contract, just extend it so we get, we've got a lot of work, the calendar, a lot of activities, things going, because her contract ended the end of June. So I'd like to continue it for those two months that we get this opened up and get it filled. If that's okay, again, we can just continue with this.
We definitely would rather have us keep going to keep it going.
Yeah, there's just, it's a busy time coming up now with activities.
Yep.
Yeah, that contract is done, and so I guess I would say it'd be opening up both of them.
I'd be more comfortable with you continuing it out for a couple of months and running it through whomever we contract with or their assistance.
Okay, that would be the game plan. And then sometime early August or mid-August, open it up, open the position up.
Are you returning to the HR audit, Katie?
No.
Are we anticipating, I was thinking, oh, that's gonna take months.
I, I think it's, you know, the process, that it's gonna take us a while. I don't think we'll have any conclusions from that till probably October.
Sure, and then, yeah.
That's my guess.
Right, but they can certainly identify.
That would be the game plan. And then sometime early August or mid-August, open it up, open the position up.
Are you returning to the HR audit, Katie?
No.
Are we anticipating, I was thinking, oh, that's gonna take months.
I, I think it's, you know, the process, that it's gonna take us a while. I don't think we'll have any conclusions from that till probably October.
Sure, and then, yeah.
That's my guess.
Right, but they can certainly identify some...
So, it's, so, are you saying, Katie, that you want to extend what we've got going until that wage study comes back, and then open that up for HR study?
I would actually be a lot more comfortable doing that.
Keep it going, just wait it is until...
Correct.
Okay, okay, no, that just gives us some time of consistency until we do that. No, I'm good with that. That's all I have.
Um, the next item on our agenda is the open forum. At this point, I haven't received any red cards. Does anyone have one that they would like to turn in? Okay, then we will move on to item four, enhancing learning, and the first item is the all-school handbook. There is a recommendation to approve the 2017 all-school handbook. Is anyone willing to make that motion? Oh, did I skip that? I totally did. Oh, my goodness. Back to item two-B. Mark, did you have anything else?
Two-B or not two?
Mark, did you have anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so, back to item two-B, financial reports. I think there's something linked on the agenda there. Dave, do you have anything to add?
We are still closing down sixteen-seventeen, meeting, I believe, tomorrow, Shannon, is that ready to finalize special ed?
Close to finalizing.
Close to finalizing. Which, as we talked about, the transfer from Fun Ten to Fun Twenty-Seven, that's a big expenditure, getting ready for audit, doing a lot of journal entries, a lot of year-end stuff, so we're finalizing that. You'll be getting the final budget-to-actual report in August. We're gonna have the, in that, well, the comparable comparison budget with the seventeen-eighteen budget also at September budget here. So, there's a lot of information coming, and we're, like I said, we're still closing it right now.
Any questions? All right, now on to item two-C, school board member reports. Do you want to share?
I asked CISA if they would have, or if they had a breakdown of how many, and our CISA, which is a relatively large area of the state, are telling us how many of them have special HR positions, to give us a better idea. So, he's gonna put that together, he was gonna be done this week, but he's gonna work on it next week, just to give us an idea. At the time, Victor, who's the finance guy there, he thought it was a, maybe not, I know, he said, as far as he knew, very few, if, if even one or two have it as a separate position. Schools just are not the size to finance that position separately. I think the idea, I'm glad to go into audit the way we are, to get a survey, but it's also better, I think, unofficial and visibly responsible, if I don't, only others are actually got this position.
I wonder if CISA would ever have stepped into offering that as a contract, that's what it's... Anything else? All right, now on to item three, open forum.
Oh, look at the card in school, you know?
Yes.
Yeah.
Seeing no red cards, we move on to item four, the enhanced learning. Item four-A is the all-school handbook, and there's a recommendation to approve the 2017 all-school handbook. Is anyone willing to make that recommendation? Guys, Tom? Thank you, Gordy. Thank you, Bob. Any questions or discussion?
I have a question. So, thank you so much for responding, Shannon and Sarah, to my questions, I appreciate it. Yeah, it helped me.
Good.
I thought I recalled reading something about a change from, what are those sheets that you give students for behavior issues?
At one level?
That would be middle school, that'd be the next thing on the agenda.
It is. Where it went from four to five?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll wait. Unless you want to just answer now?
I can answer now.
Because I'm, I'm fine with that. Yeah. Was there, was there changing, and I couldn't find it again tonight?
Oh, well, I don't know why, because I, I haven't touched it since then, so it should be on the next, it should be in the next one, the, the one that has the middle school up front of it. Should be in there, it's just a strike through, just a change in number, is all it was, based on the change we made last year after we got to print.
Because you probably want to...
Yes. So, any further discussion on the all-school handbook? All right, all those in favor of approving the 2017 all-school handbook, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. The next item, item four-B is the middle school all-school handbook. It's the second reading of this item, there's a recommendation to approve the 2017 eighteen middle school all-school handbook. Is anyone willing to make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Bob. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Patty. Any questions or discussion about that?
Okay, say one. I can't, I still can't find it, sir.
The strike through has been taken out of it.
Oh.
So, it would be under academic and behavior tracking forms. It's the last sentence in the first paragraph underneath there. I don't know what page I'm on, because I'm sitting on my phone at a computer.
It's, what, under what?
Under academic and behavior tracking forms.
Oh, there it is.
And it's the last sentence there.
Okay.
I got it right here.
Okay. So, what, can you just tell me what the thought process was from changing it to four to nine?
Sure. Um, like, in June of twenty-sixteen, we sat down as a staff and looked at our processes and made the change then. My handbook had already begun to print by that point in time.
That's what it was.
So, we changed, so this is basically a change that was a practice last year.
It's the first time in print.
First time in print, though.
Has it helped?
For some.
What's the breakdown of, like, criteria? Is there a breakdown in criteria that, when they, like, the teachers have for, is there?
Yeah, there's a font.
Is there?
Yeah. Yes.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the 2017 middle school handbook, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. So, now we are on to item C, the elementary all-school handbook, and there's a recommendation to approve the 1718 elementary school handbook. Is there anyone willing to make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Bob. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Gordy. Any questions about the elementary school handbook?
I don't know.
I mean, I didn't hear anything about attendance, and I don't think you were at our last meeting. Was there, because there looks like attendance and procedures...
Quite a bit of yellow there, huh?
Yes.
Yeah, um, we've, as we partway through this school year, got a new person in the role of our attendance taker, still named Jennifer, just a different last name, different person. And, um, as we went through and spent a little more time on one of our in-service days with middle school and high school secretaries and office staff, kind of went through it again, you know, look at some for policies. So, one of the primary changes is in excused days, that from now on, if your excuse is medical note, that won't count against your ten excuse days for the year, and so that'll actually help families avoid true, and see if they're truly gone with the doctor's note that's signed and legitimate, which is a good thing. We don't want, you know, we've, so that will greatly help. Tardiness, you'll note in the all-school handbook that we're a little bit different than the element, than the middle and high school. You become tardy, you become absent at eight-thirty, you're tardy from eight oh-five to eight-thirty, because we don't start till eight oh-five, whereas they start later. So, that's a difference. Not much of the else is that much difference. Some of this you'll see is very, very similar to the middle school, so just kind of aligning we're doing into the high school.
We tried to line it up, so that parents get used to it, because when practices change from the elementary, and then they come in, parents come into the middle school, and they're like, well, that's not the way it was done at the elementary school. So, in order to try to help parents see that, yep, we're tracking attendance, you know, it looks a little different in each building because of whole and half days versus period attendance, but as far as expectations for getting a written note to school, you know, the latest thing that was tried this year was text messages from parents. No, it's not gonna fly, you know, so those kinds of pieces, we're trying to cover and make it as consistent as possible for parents.
No, I like the consistency part across the building.
So, I would say pretty much that's something up to the, all that yellow there for that section.
That's a lot of yellow.
That is a lot of yellow, but it's good, it'll tighten things up a little bit. Parents, I think, will appreciate the doctor's note change, and again, the consistency throughout will be a very positive thing for everybody, for parents and for staff and for...
I'm a little confused, they weren't allowed, they were excused, if they had an excuse?
They were excused, but they counted as the ten excused. So, you get ten excused for this date, and the reason, we, we are still human beings who check this, myself, our people service staff, so we still, there is some room there. If you were gone, you know, fifteen times with twelve of them were medical, we didn't pursue occupancy that way. But all our reports are automated reports here for the campus, so this will help us, they'll be coded differently, so they'll come up differently, and it'll just make it simpler, and, and I think help everybody all around, so.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Any other questions or discussion on elementary handbook? All right, all those in favor of approving the 2017 eighteen elementary school handbook, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion passes unanimously, six to zero. Uh, next item on the agenda for discussion is the extracurricular advisor and coaching handbook. I know we had asked John for, oh, are these assignments still?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, you did, well, that's a different topic.
Higher, thank you, teacher.
Yeah, we just have courses, so...
Yeah.
Go to the next one, or she's next one?
It's R B, it's one, second. Um, I know when John, when it was initially presented in our work session, there were no changes to it. But some clarification on the, um, fundraising and youth camps was requested. Do you know if there was anything done at that part?
We should get the funding.
He did say that you made that change. He did tweak the language.
Okay.
Um, so if you go to the page eleven...
On your fundraising, right?
Which paragraph?
A whole lot of, yeah.
Fundraising procedures.
Was that something we asked him last week? What was the question?
Yeah, oh, wait, no, it's on the question.
He does address it, paragraph two, yeah.
What was the question he asked him?
Um, so, just looking for some clarification between fundraising and, um, youth camps that are just being provided as youth camps, and who's sponsoring them. That was one thing that we were working to improve when this handbook was, was started, and, um, I don't remember what other page.
Where does he address the camps?
That was, I think, in another section.
Okay, how about page twenty-two?
There we go. Mine's highlighted.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I like it.
I do, too.
Yeah, that's good.
So, that would be the first reading of this, so if anyone, is there any other questions that we should pour it on to John or ask Shannon? During them, we will move on to the extracurricular code. And, I believe that's one, they're also, I don't recall having a first reading on this.
Is there any changes, Shannon, to this?
There were no changes, this would be your first reading?
Okay.
So, my only question on this is the D R F, is pull every Monday?
Yeah, so, well, tell me your question, because me and I had a long conversation about that.
So, let's just say the first week comes up.
Yeah.
Somebody bombs a physics test, or somebody bombs an F, English, whatever, F, you know, creates a third practice.
Yeah, yeah.
So, maybe it's just Monday, it's a qualification basis, so, okay.
Yep, um, so John and I sat down and talked specifically about, on here, it's letter A-one, um, you know, after running this school year, with this being the first year that this practice was in place, to try to really reduce that DNF list, which was at times massive, um, implementing this practice, got some feedback from coaches, just about some of the communication pieces of it, and really dealing with some of those kind of gray areas. One example, someone brought up to me, which I thought was great, was, you know, if you have a teacher that's, you know, home with a sick kid for three days, and all of a sudden doesn't grade some things on time, here comes Monday, it looks like you're getting an F, you're not really getting an F, so trying to tighten up just that communication with staff and coaches and teachers, and trying to streamline as well some ways to kind of manage all that, because that's a lot of information and data and kids and grades, and, um, so to kind of speak to your point, Bob, um, my understanding is, and I'm still learning a little bit of this, too, is, the beginning of each semester is waiting three weeks in, essentially, to avoid something like that, because if we're trying to align it with the philosophy of, you know, kids may not just have learned something yet, not penalizing them kind of right out of the gate, um, so, I think this is gonna be a little bit of work in progress. We also talked about, you know, would it make more sense to pull those grades every other week, you know, just to avoid some of those things, but, um, as it is right now, this is how it stands, if, you know, if you have any other additional input, certainly let us know, but, um, I would say it's undeniable that the DNF list has reduced significantly with, you know, that more constant monitoring versus waiting till that nine-week mark. You know, for some kids, depending on how deep the hole is, it's almost too late, so...
So, do we have a lot of kids sending all of activities, visiting this?
Um, when John and I spoke, he said I wouldn't say a lot, um, you know, in any given week, he estimated it was, you know, two to five kids, depending on, you know, so, again, now that I'm learning a little bit more about the system and how to kind of manage this, I think there's some ways that we can, again, tighten it up a little bit more. There's some exit slips that are involved, with having teachers kind of sign off, and, you know, just, you know, year one, I think it was great, now just, now that we've kind of been through it, and again, coaches giving some feedback, too. I know there were some instances with, um, good intentions, that coaches were made aware, like, getting onto a bus, that so-and-so couldn't participate, and, you know, just some things like that, just to try to tighten it up, but...
So, we need to do a second reading on this? Does it need to be, are you the way for our work session?
Not unless you're gonna make some changes, I was just gonna look like a lob out somewhere here.
Are we comfortable bringing it on a first reading?
Were you gonna say something?
Well, you can throw something out here.
Yeah.
Again, this can be for down the road, but, you know, when it was Principal Holly, we ran into a situation where there was very similar to this, but we did want to take kids
to this. But we did want to take kids out. You know, we wanted to create an opportunity that they really had to abuse the resources to not participate. So we wanted to give them an opportunity to be able to still participate, but also get extra help. So we created a before-school session, uh, it was, you know, one or two days a week and we'd staff it. Uh, but these kids had to report to that session before school and catch up with homework or be monitored on what they're doing. But as long as they did that, they could still participate. So we didn't, you know, you just don't take them out and make them sit on the sideline on that. But again, it's, it's a few dollars to do something like that. But again, it's, it wasn't the best interest of the kids.
Mark, if I can do just to kind of, yeah, back off of that, I think even more immediately, um, having some discussions about restructuring our current homeroom time, um, is probably going to be the first step to hopefully avoid kids having, and that's already something we have in place right now and that's kind of a part of our bigger discussion. I'll bring some of that forward to, we talked about the handbook in August for the high school, but, um...
Because you're gonna have busing issues, you know, for some of the kids.
Again, those are some of the consequences that kids, if they want to participate, they may have to overcome, things like that. But, you know, to play with time doesn't cost us anything. You know, I mean, we can reconfigure and what have you, because again, some kids need this small time, some needs this, some of them need this, you know. So how we restructure time to fit, meet those needs, those are things. When we start talking about alternative schedules, which we'll do a lot of that this year, to see what best meets our, meet our needs, you know, because a six-period day is not the answer. So what is though? You know, so we're gonna have a lot, do a lot of work this year on that schedule for the following year. And so I, I would say, you know, what we have, go forward, but I just wanted to lay out some other options to keep kids participating because kids are here for the academics, the arts, and the activities. And those three things keep everyone here. It's a little different for everyone.
Um, one question that I had, one change that was made last year, maybe or the year before, was in item C1 with the violations. Um, sorry, it might be C2, C2. Um, it was added in that law enforcement could, um, report a violation. Um, I'm just curious about how many violations have been reported by law enforcement? You know, is there a strong level of collaboration there? Are there other ways that we could improve that? Um, so I'd be curious about feedback on that.
I can give you what I have right now if you're interested. Um, you know, my frame is basically from February till now, so it's not super exhaustive. But, um, even in that time, Officer Maline, um, you know, would certainly share information. And you have to be a little bit careful too with, you know, minor information, those kinds of things. Um, John and I worked with St. Craig County at least two occasions when there was a major infraction that occurred that potentially involved some of our athletes and, um, you know, so I would say so far what I've seen, there's been, I would consider a high level based off of, there aren't a ton of those things happening right now, at least that we're made aware of, probably more than we know. But, um, yeah, right now, I mean, Adam will share if he comes across any information and St. Craig County has been involved at least twice, so.
All right. So as a board, are we comfortable, um, approving this recommendation on the first reading or would you prefer to delay until August and have a second reading?
I think because they need the handbook. I am okay with getting going, we can make changes, but this year it would be in place. Do you do addendums? Trying to clearing here?
That's what I'm asking.
Is it in policy?
It's not a policy.
It's not a policy?
You know, after this year, you might have a lot of different changes.
Yeah.
The policy, it's easier on that.
Okay. Um, so, um, is anyone, we have a recommendation that the school board approve the two thousand seventeen eighteen extracurricular code. Is anyone willing to make that motion?
So will.
Thank you, Patty. A second?
A second, Patty.
Great. Although, uh, we had a discussion, but are there any further questions or discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. Motion passes six to zero. Um, that said, do we want to step back to item, what would it be, four, um, four D, um, even though there was not a recommendation to approve it? Uh, we did review the handbook during the work session. The updates were suggested, were made, and I do believe that John would like to start informing his coaches and working with them based on that handbook.
There's no deal breakers for me on their side. I'd love to go this year.
Um, so, uh, is anyone willing to make a motion to approve the extracurricular advisor and coaching handbook? I'll make that motion. Thank you, Marie.
Sorry.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, any further questions or discussions on that one? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any yes? Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. Um, so now we are moving forward to item four F, the academic and career planning. There is a recommendation with the school board approve the two thousand seventeen academic and career planning proposal. Anyone willing to make that motion?
Who?
Thank you, Patty. A second?
I'll second. I'm sorry, did you want to?
Katie would like to.
Katie would like to? All right. So we have a motion made by Patty and seconded by Katie. Any questions or discussions on the academic and career planning proposal?
It sounds really good, by the excitement that they had last week.
Very excited about it.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. Onto item number five A, the director of principals reports. Um, we have a seclusion restraint report.
Um, so this is the annual, uh, seclusion restraint report that I am required to give by law, um, to our school board. Um, next year, Abby will give this report, but one last time here. Um, so, you know, the top F there, just a, you know, really quick definition of seclusion and restraint. Um, and then this year, um, toward the bottom, I added in our numbers for fifteen sixteen, just for some comparison. Um, you know, every year, any staff that we reasonably believe will be involved in any type of physical restraint goes through CPI training specifically for physical restraint. That's a part of the law to make sure that we have, um, staff appropriately trained. Um, you know, so, you know, we continue to have a lot of conversations around the district regarding ways to avoid ever having to put our hands on kids and de-escalation strategies and techniques and those kinds of things. Um, you know, our numbers, I would say, in a couple different strata, or a couple of categories here, um, you know, went down significantly. Um, you know, in the, in the open meeting, I was a little bit hesitant about answering too many questions, just to make sure we don't unintentionally identify any students involved in these, you know, categories. But if you have any specific questions, I can certainly give a higher level of detail, either connect with me one-on-one or in a different forum. But, um, you know, in probably once a year, directors will, you know, do some kind of loose comparison regarding these numbers and just kind of do an informal check. Are we in line? Are we above? Are we below? Um, you know, we continue to be on the low end of physical restraint and the low end of seclusion. Um, you know, some of that sometimes just depends on the makeup of students that you have in your district and, um, so I feel like staff, you know, especially, you know, as the years go by and the more training that we do, continually be highly trained. Um, you know, I've had the opportunity multiple times to watch staff, you know, directly in those situations and, you know, I would say with a hundred percent confidence, you know, any staff involved, um, really is highly aware that, you know, putting your hands on a student is always a last resort. So, you know, any, any, especially with the physical restraint part of it, um, you know, that was involving imminent danger, either to the student themselves or to another student or another staff member. So, um, if you have questions, definitely let me know. I can certainly answer what I can right now, but...
What do you attribute, uh, big decrease in these numbers to?
Uh, student population changes.
I have just a regular, a simple, hopefully question.
Yeah.
Uh, my daughter's an OT involvement and then another couple of kids that I know because we're in the circle with them. They, she's just came up from Bearaboo to Hammond, St. Craig Central, and her sister's too. And I'm wondering if they have the opportunity to network and how is our training handled for especially aides that come on board for special needs? Do they have an opportunity to learn different tips and tricks from people so that they could feel more confident in their decision?
So our support staff here.
Right, and then the ability to network with other schools.
Yeah. I would say the networking in general for support staff does not happen all that often. Um, here, our support staff are involved in all of our CPI trainings, um, our professional development we have throughout the year. We bring them back typically three full days throughout the year. Any support staff that, again, have the reasonable expectation that they may be involved in a physical restraint in particular, um, you know, I do once a month refreshers, they come to all of those. Um, I would also say in comparison to other schools in our conference, we do twice as much training with our support staff than other schools I talk to. Um, you know, so, because many of them are in the throes of this all the time, um, sometimes much more often than a teacher or a case manager if it's a student with an IEP.
Right.
Um, so in-house, I would say we do a lot. You know, external networking is something that just hasn't occurred a lot, but maybe our new director could get that going.
There you go. The three of them, being, one of them specializing in autism, and, um, they actually have a dedicated autism program. And I thought, well, do, we don't handle, do we? Where the, she's actually responsible for nine to thirteen, or was at Bearaboo and then coming up here. She was, it's specific area. And she's actually at the middle school only and then there's a separate one for the high school.
Sure.
I don't know where we are at with that.
Nothing that formal, but, yeah, I, the networking seems a great idea.
I think they actually, St. Craig Central support staff, we can visit it in another district. I don't know, we'll work on these days, visit with their support staff, um, on their, I'm just saying, they were preparing for that. And it's a positive thing, so.
If you'd like to do it.
Yeah, there you go.
I know they felt like it's a great way to gain some supporting confidence and the choice of the, plus to share ideas and things to try.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, on to item six, engagement and your partnerships. We currently have any items there, so we'll move on to item seven.
We kind of do, but Katie planned tomorrow, or Wednesday, excuse me. Kind of engaging, isn't it?
Yeah.
On to item seven, advanced services and operations. Uh, first item seven A is the seventeen eighteen staff wage increases. And I know we have a presentation from Dave. Is this more informational?
Uh...
Well, not what I'm looking at.
How much do we pay him? Let me get my money clip.
Let's go.
So, you, you had asked me to check a couple of different percentages and so I was able to do that this afternoon. Uh, so I just wanted to run it by you. And also I wanted to show you, um, just to make sure we're clear on what the teacher comp plan looks like, uh, you had asked to apply a percentage of that as well. Um, so I wanted to make, in retrospect, after the meeting, I, I didn't know if it was clear, uh, what this is and how it works, so I just wanted to run through that again. Because, um, it's not the same as what it would look like if it was a salary schedule per se. That's all get, it's gonna come up in a second, I assume. So, uh, as I... Is it this one?
That would be, that would be the one I'm looking at, because of searching for you.
There you go. All right. So I had mentioned, um, this one, for this year, the budget was created based on what was done last year. Last year, uh, being the first year of the teacher comp plan, this being the second. Um, and that was, that this was applied to all teachers and then the percentage, um, increase that was seen on average by all teachers within the comp plan, i.e. teachers that weren't either leading the district or brand new to the district, those teachers that remained in the district. Uh, the average change in their wage, what they would earn, uh, in seventeen eighteen, uh, was calculated by percentage and then that was applied to every other employee. That's what was done for sixteen seventeen and so that's, again, that's the same thing, that was, same process that I use this time. You would ask me, and that ended up being two percent, when we look at everybody, uh, including, uh, the people at the max wage here, uh, in each credit group or lane, uh, who have this max wage, that's their, their base that they hold on to and then the stipend that's, uh, not basically, but, um, essentially there every year unless the board were to change it. So, when we add, when you look at everybody moving within the schedule, uh, and then also the people at the top, uh, in just the eight hundred dollar stipend, the average overall is two percent, little over two percent. And so that's what we, I applied to everybody else. You would ask me, what about one point five percent? What about two, two point five percent? And so excluding the teacher group, when we just look at, uh, all other employees, um, one point five percent, it goes, the, the total, uh, cost, all other things equal, uh, goes down ninety-five hundred dollars.
Ninety-five hundred.
Ninety-five hundred. Two point five percent goes up ninety-five hundred dollars. That's because that's, that includes benefits and, uh, changing as well, so like FICA and so forth. But, um, it's because it's changing a half percent either way.
That's about certified?
All staff other than teachers.
Like with admin?
Mm-hmm.
And supervisors?
So if you build their base up one and a half percent?
Well, so let me, let me...
Manageable decreases.
Right, so teachers, again, the, the two percent was calculated from what the teachers did. So, um, they're not at, uh, two percent per se, if we're looking at a salary schedule. The movement within this, um, how this was created, um, and I guess it was, I think it was based on another school district. It was kind of, um, at the time, Randy and Trish kind of brought the language together and the functionality of it. Uh, and I applied it to staff and I, I made it work for everybody and, and place people. Uh, the sixteen hundred dollars, uh, it's movement within. And so looking at it for clarification, uh, if I was to apply, uh, one point five, two or two point five, I'm looking at the, the max wage is what I'm looking at, uh, increasing the top level. And so...
And five?
Yes, the, the maximum wage possible in each, before you earn the stipend. Uh, and so if I apply one point five onto this, so that's brand new, um, that's an additional thirty thousand five hundred. If I apply two percent, that's thirty-nine thousand four hundred. Uh, two point five percent, forty-six thousand nine hundred. And so right now, there are thirty-six teachers at the max, within whatever lane essentially they're in. Uh, at one point five percent, that changes to twenty-six, it remains twenty-six at two percent, and it's down to fifteen, uh, teachers at two point five percent. So that's, there's some significant, uh, movement there, you can see. So again...
How many teachers are at the max?
Right now?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Or, or will be, uh, for seventeen eighteen, following this, uh, procedure again.
Right. So to your most experienced teachers, these thirty-six, um, we're saying it's great you developed in whatever range you're at. Um, you're, you're only going to get even dollars going to be stolen unless we actually left, um...
That's right. And some people this year are moving to the max, like for sixteen seventeen, they weren't yet, and now they're moving to it. And I think, uh, there's two or three that get a partial and, so, yeah, they're out of movement. But once you get there, you, yeah, you're staying there until we change it. So that was the, I just wanted to make clear that that was the, that's how I approached it because that's, um...
You're getting the eight hundred, once you're at the top, you get the eight hundred stipend.
Well, and I want to clarify too, it, this doesn't function, it wasn't intended to function as a salary schedule function. So I, there's nothing changing at the sixteen hundred. Uh, there's nothing else changing within this. The only place I applied the percentage was at the maximum wage in each, uh, credit group or lane. So that's the clarification I wanted to make in this.
The maximum or the minimum too?
Not the minimum.
Just the max.
Are you saying in this schedule that you don't have a minimum?
This is the minimum.
But to give us an idea of the cost you applied to them.
But he hasn't increased the minimum.
Correct.
The minimum is the minimum, that's right there, BA one, you're gonna have a forty-one seven.
And so I guess...
But the range is going to be higher, but it's putting it on tail end.
As, as I look at this, just for my, my two cents, as I look at this, um, I think it's perfectly reasonable... to say, maybe it's too confusing, maybe we don't like it, that maybe we want a salary schedule. We want to address it, and we should discuss it throughout 17-18. And I think the wage study will play a big role in this, because I, you know, I can look at local data and I can see, uh, minimum, starting wage, and I can see maximum wages, and I see where we fall, and see our wish. Um, I think that would be important information to look at when we consider attracting and retaining staff, and what do we want to do, and what can we afford to do? And that's why I wanted to clarify again, because this is, uh, for this area, it's not the most common structure. You know, and so I don't, you know, I want to make clear what it is and what it isn't. And this is where, this is where we're at right now, this is what we did last year. My two sentences, I think it would be a little difficult to create something brand-new right now, but it's certainly worth having a, a good discussion about through this year so we can do something new if we want to for next year.
Yeah, your top and, your bottom and top are really good. I mean, we're, we're higher starting than anyone around us. We're really good at the starting. You know, in the, you know, if you're in the metro, you're going to be, you're going to end your career somewhere around eighty. But that, uh, that starting is, to track people, is pretty good. But then how it's applied has been, then my hang-up too, is where people are placed on it, because it's been very subjective. And that's, I probably have a dozen cases in my file that I told people, I, we will look at, I don't have a rhyme or reason, a way to solve it, because everything's different. But, you know, when you have two people, same years of experience, same education, but there may have been ten, twelve thousand dollars difference, you know, you're going to, like, that's an issue.
And I'm sure the sixteen-hundred flag across the board for earning your, your staff increase, basically, is because they, that helps people at the lower end of the salary structure, it's the higher percentage.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
And so that helps offset any health insurance increases.
Yeah, and as you're, and as you're moving through, you're continually, without adding to the schedule, you're still getting raised, and so.
And there's a couple of...
Except until you're at the top.
Right.
And there's a couple of things...
And it's, it's always been an issue, you know, it's, and that just isn't here, and it's...
I know.
You know, it's everywhere, and how do you, what do you do with it?
Give it a look every once in a while, though. CPI went up, it would be 1.26 July 1st, and if it goes up higher, it does...
That's the decision, you basically...
Well, that's why I'm saying to them, tactically, it's true.
But I'd like to see, I'd like to see something.
Yeah, we need the way...
A stronger system, one that's less arbitrary, you know?
But my understanding is before mid-September, we need to make a decision about wages for the 17-18 school year, for that budget year's purposes.
And as of the, uh, the presentation, uh, the deficit right now is one-hundred-and-twenty-six. Uh, like I said, wrapping up special ed will help us further refine this in the future. And also legislatively, and I don't have an update yet on that, as far as the revenue side. But, I mean, there are, there are interesting models. I think Hudson, in fact, pulls out different, um, types, uh, different categories of what you teach, and says, you know, these maybe get a market, um, a, a market-type agreement to start with, uh, whereas other teaching groups don't. So, I mean, there's different things to address, and I think that's how we got into so many situations is, uh, you know, Randy had a recommendation, this is our only person that we can hire right now, and, and they won't come here without X, Y, or Z, what have you. So, th- there's a big discussion, and I think the wage study plays a big role in it. And I think the things you want to address and the things that you have concern about right now can be addressed.
Yeah.
If it's changing current people or not, certainly we can get procedures going forward so we can address it consistently.
So do we want staff wages to be an item on our, um, August agenda? And look to take action in August?
Or will you, would it be better to wait till September, when you know about the budget?
Well, you know...
I'd feel more comfortable until we have a little narrow, a little more surety of what legislature's going to do.
But does that give you enough time to put together the budget for the annual basis?
Well, right now it's based on two percent. It's based on the, the plan and two percent. And so, uh, at a later point, if we say we want to reduce percentage or what have you, we can do that. Uh, you know, we're not locking in anything, like Mark said. Obviously, the sooner I know it, the sooner I can let people know. And I have the final contract, so on and so forth. But, uh, yeah, the third Friday count will be a big factor for us. Hopefully by then, the state legislature will have decided what we get on the revenue side. That count will be a big factor in that. Uh, we have to be finalized and not go away.
So I know this was listed as an item with a recommendation, um, but I'm hearing that we will add it to a future agenda? So, yes?
Yeah, you don't have to have that, uh, uh, we left it specifically, in that case you wanted to.
Okay.
It's there if you did, which I would recommend, and just, we've pulled off all of those.
And if I heard you right, you said we've got a deficit of one-hundred-and-twenty-six, though, correct?
As of the presentation, yeah, yeah.
All right, so we will move on to item seven B, the Board of Education 17-18, uh, school, or school board meeting agenda. We have a recommendation to approve the meeting schedule. Anyone willing to make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Katie. Anyone willing to second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Courtney. Um, any questions about this, or discussion? Please note that the August work session is delayed one week, to August 14th. All right, all those in favor of approving, uh, approving the 17-18 schedule, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? And I'll show you, passes unanimously, six to zero. Um, item seven C is NEOLA policy 1230. Uh, we have a recommendation that the school board delete NEOLA policy 1230. I will make that motion, is anyone willing to second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Marie. Any questions or discussion about that? Um, we did check, it's not, uh, mentioned in Mark's contract at all.
It'll get somewhere else, Marie.
All right, all those in favor of deleting policy 1230, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. Um, next up, we have item eight, our consent agenda. Is anyone willing to make a motion to approve items A through F, the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Bob. Um, any, second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Courtney. Any questions, or sharing?
Is, um, I'm just surprised by the resignation of our school psychologist, is this today?
She lives in Hudson, she had a job.
All those, all that?
Well, it opens the door for someone else.
All right, all those in favor of approving our consent agenda, items A through F, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. Um, item nine, we have general information, and I don't see any items on that. So we'll move on to item 10, adjournment. Anyone willing to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Katie. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Bob. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Motion...